Thank you. Welcome. Good afternoon, everybody. It's June 11th. And I'm echoing. It's Committee of the Whole, Finance Administration and Communications. We have all council members present. Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Nuava Kamina, Councilmember Salvin, Councilmember Forsyth, Councilmember Kritzer, and joining us in one second is Councilmember Anderson, and I am Councilmember Fields. We have four items on the agenda, and I think the first one is the lion's share of our meeting, and it's a review of the budget process. Director Cochran will take it from here.
Good afternoon, council. So I'm here today to provide you with an update for June 2024. We'll go over the same information that we were rushed in going through in the last committee meeting, as well as some additional recommendations that I've included that have been prepared for discussion. So in looking at where we currently are in the budget, well, let me just go over quickly what's on the agenda. So we'll do a process update, go through the capital investment process, including the forecast that's existing for the preliminary CIP that you will be seeing very soon, as well as an update on the general fund, what it looks like through the first quarter of 2024, what that is informing the forecast of. And then I've got a couple of recommendations that I would like to run by you and see your thoughts. So budget process-wise, this is the killer time. This is when it's all coming together. So the CIP and the business technology programs are prepared and getting prepared for a presentation for council. We are presenting that to you on July 9th, so we are in full swing of preparing those items. We are in the final development week of the baseline budget offers. So Haritha's team is getting those refinements done, sending those packages back out to departments to review. So it will include their baseline budgets, the narratives, the FTEs, all of the information that we communicate through the budget document, they will review one more time. While that is going on, we are putting together the final elements of the forecast and gathering information about service enhancements that are needed in the next budget process. So when then we have pulled together the revenue forecast, as well as the expenditure needs, we'll understand what our gap is, and that's what we will spend time in July doing, refining and budget balancing. The CIP process is wrapping up very nicely. In June, we are reviewing the funded CIP preliminary and preparing presentations for council. Public Works is taking the lead on those presentations. I had an opportunity to review them this morning, and I think that you'll like what Tess Wilkinson has done to help communicate the projects for the next biennium. She's laid out really nicely what you approved in the last budget and how it compares to the upcoming one, not only in dollars, but also in where the project will be in its implementation. So is it moving from design to construction? Is it staying in design? She's added quite a little bit of information for, to those slides. I found it really helpful. We are also then working on preparing for a public hearing that will occur after we present the programs to you to get some input from the community on any concerns, advice, suggestions that they have. When it comes to the forecast, I first want to talk about what we're seeing for 2023 and 2024. That is a $359 million budget, and for the most part, we're seeing our revenues perform as we would expect. There are a few that are anomalies, and I want to go over those in a little bit more detail. The capital facility charges, which are about halfway down, and impact fees, which are all the way at the bottom, those are development-related revenues that are paid at the time a project is happening, to pay for capacity in a system that you need. So it's either in a utility system, you're paying for capacity in the pipes, or it's for a transportation system or the fire system. We had seen quite a bit of a decline in those towards the end of 2024, early 2023. Within the last couple of months, those have taken a big rebound, hoping it continues, but it's something that we are watching. So we do tend, when we're seeing a slowdown in development, to see these revenues decline first. We're seeing indications that they are starting to slow down. Still no concerns that we won't make our targets, but we have ensured that the forecast for '25, '26 recommend, or sees those changes and carries them through. The other I wanted to talk about is business license revenue. We've continued to see increases in that revenue source since we went to the state model in 2022. We received some of this revenue in the capital program to pay for transportation and transportation demand management projects and programs, and we also received some in the general fund as well. So in both funds, we're seeing increases, and I think it has to do with the service that the state can provide us in ensuring that people are registering as they should. So the revenue forecast for '25 through '30 is still very healthy. We're, without fund balance included, we're looking at a forecast of about $330 million. If we add fund balance and look at how we have allocated revenues over this six years, it's a $392 million capital investment program. One of the largest growing revenues that we have is the other agencies and miscellaneous, and that's due to the transportation benefit district that council put in place. We have received our third month of revenue for the transportation district, and we are receiving receipts as we would expect, hovering between $350,000 and $380,000 within those three months, and that's what we were projecting. The other big allocations is our REIT revenue, and that is due to the REIT fund balance that we were holding in order to start paying for the maintenance and operations center, which we should see under design and construction in the upcoming biennium. Expenditure-wise, spending-wise, the capital program is spending very well when looking at 2023. We usually try to hit a marker of about 80% for the full biennium. I haven't had an opportunity to run these numbers for 2024 yet. I need to update this model with our new data source. But looking at what we are seeing in the monthly financial reports, they have been able to continue with their high spend rate, or higher than average spend rate. Some of it has to do with the senior center, but it's not all influenced by that. They have quite a few programs and projects moving forward. I'm sorry that this is so, so small, but I have a few recommendations, and if the first two, I'm interested in hearing if you are interested in moving that action forward into this year. They both refer to recommendations to pay off loans that we have that were taken out to fund capital improvement projects that have happened in the past. When looking at our program and the dedicated funding sources that we have for them, those funding sources have accumulated to the point where we have fund balance available to pay off the remaining principal and save our self-interest without harming, putting off, delaying other capital programs. So we have accumulated business license revenue. We've accumulated some impact fee revenue. That is just, it's a restricted funding source. It's a little bit harder to spend, and at this point, we could utilize that to pay off these two loans and save ourself some interest cost. I have queued it up to be a part of the budget and have those actions take place in 2025, but with these loans, we really could do it this year. And if you're interested, I'd be happy to bring budget adjustments forward so we could get that action taken care of in 2024. Interested to know if you have any concerns, either now, then, or any questions.
So you want to deal with this right now?
I would like to.
Okay. Councilmembers, any? Councilmember Forsyth.
Without seeing the rest of the CIP and what we're looking at, I'm hesitant to go ahead and pay off maybe the smaller ones, just knowing what interest rates look like right now, knowing what we're planning for in the future, I'm cautious.
Councilmember Kritzer.
I'd be interested in getting more information on it. I think it's a little hard without the full information to be able to make the decision, but being able to create interest savings if we do have the funding available, I think, is something that seems prudent to look at, if you think that there's potential for us to save some funding in the long run and not sacrifice any kind of trade-offs for other projects that we may want to do.
Yeah. It would make sense to hold off on this action in case there are things that need to be added and we need these revenue sources. It's, that works.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be I'd be happy for you to bring us more information on it so we could read through and then have a deeper discussion this year, if there are savings that we could be had this year if we decided that was the right thing to do.
Sure.
Councilmember Nuava Kamina.
I'm checking in to see, thank you. I'm checking in to see if we repaid the two loans, then are we also anticipating calling the bonds in 2025 in addition to that?
So the bonds is an additional action, so we have two bond issuances that are callable in 2025. It would be calling them essentially five years early. And again, this is an area where we have been able to accumulate fund balance, have not had an opportunity to allocate it in the next six-year program. So currently, we have the resources available to take action, save ourself some interest costs. But what I'll do is I'll just make sure that this is part of the preliminary, full preliminary proposal, and you can look at it in full context.
Councilmember Anderson.
When that comes back, could you put the interest rates on the description?
Sure.
So we can understand.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Stewart.
I think I heard a couple of things. I heard two councilmembers ask for more information, and then I heard that it would be coming back to us in the preliminary budget. I think what I heard that the council so far has been asking for is to have a discussion on it with some more complete information before, before we see it baked. So there's just not enough to weigh in on here just yet, but happy to have that conversation. I agree with my colleagues on that.
Yep. We will queue that up the night of the CIP discussion.
Councilmember.
Thank you. And I think, just echoing on what Councilmember Stewart mentioned, when we do see that, one thing, you mentioned one of the fund sources has a limited allocation source, I guess. So could you, maybe when we see it next, describe where we can actually spend the funds and, you know, whether this is the best use of this?
Yep. I can provide you with a description of these funding sources and what we can apply them to. We can also provide you with how they're allocated in the next six years so you can see what's remaining on issue.
Just another clarification, that 161st extension loan, that's a Public Works Board loan, is that correct?
Correct.
One thing that would be helpful for councils to know is that that money gets reinvested throughout the state in the distressed and severely distressed communities, so there's an opportunity there for us to feel better about paying it early. Thank you.
Exactly. Okay.
Any, I've got one.
Thanks.
So any other questions from? So my take is similar but different. What I would like to see is the advantages that you see. I think, you know, you're really in a better position to, to do that work and do that analysis, so make an argument as to why that would make sense, whether it's, and if the interest rates are low, make a really good argument.
Okay. They're decent interest rates, but we're just sitting on funds. But yes, I will, I'll bring that back to you. The next two items are things that we also are considering. We've not yet had an opportunity to figure out how to fund these, but they are items that have been spoken about either in front of council before or heavily at the staff level. One of them is engineering contingency. This would be funds that we would have available in each of the capital funds that would provide some flexibility if projects came in and they were overestimates when we put things out to bid. There is scope that we wanted to add, new opportunities that we wanted to take advantage of. Thoughts here is that we would start implementing a policy, most likely we would need to phase something in. But if council is interested and supportive, we will continue on our work to queue that up as part of the preliminary budget. If there is not support, we can put it off to the side. The other is reserves that we would hold at really the fund level or the asset level. These would be things that, for instance, the senior, Redmond Senior and Community Center, we would want to create kind of a separate reserve for that asset to ensure that when components of that building need to be replaced, that we're thinking about that individually. Typical best practice is 1% of the value of our assets. Don't know yet what that would look like. I do know that we would need to implement this over time, but certainly would like to do that. Just want to get your thoughts before we move forward.
Before I go to the council, our general question is, the new finance system give us a better position to do this? Is the, you know, the new capabilities of the system, is that's what's really enhancing our ability to do this?
So one of the things that the new system allows me to do is to identify different types of reserves and contingencies instead of tying them all together. So it allows us to start managing multiple reserves and contingencies.
Got it. Thank you.
With a lot of visibility in it.
Thank you. Councilmembers? Councilmember Forsyth?
I'll go first again. Definitely interested in the reserves conversation. Would want to know a bit more about the contingency for engineering, like, is there a cap like we have for everything else? Definitely interested in that cap being a little bit higher, I think, just in general because where pricing is at for everything right now. So interested in the broader scope and conversation of that topic.
Great.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Kritzer.
I think both seem like good things to discuss, especially if you identified them as good practices for us to look at. Is the engineering contingency, would that be per project?
It would sit at the fund level. So let's say a property acquisition came available and we needed the property for a future transportation project, for example, we would then have the ability to make a move on that quicker.
Got it. And what the reserves would be per project, and that only apply to city facilities?
So the reserves would sit, there's a couple of different ways to look at it. So facilities, for example, it is quite easy to match a reserve with a facility, a location, a physical location. And I think for things like facilities, at least in the beginning, we may want to look at it per facility until we can figure out overall what we need to be holding. Systems in underground is a little bit difficult, more difficult to do that. And so it may be, it may need to be based on the value of our booked assets. So we have pipe, we have pumps, we have general plant. So we may need to address the determination of reserve limits differently for the different types of infrastructure that we have.
Great, thank you. And I would say for, actually, probably both of these, I'm interested in the conversations. I'd probably want to know the balance of, you know, how much we think about keeping in reserve or contingency on, on projects and how much that might impact our ability to do additional projects, since that impacts how many funds are available. And I wouldn't want us to kind of over-index and then say we can't do some of the things we want to do, but it's more because we're keeping kind of a large amount of reserve or contingency in there.
Councilmember Nuava Kamina.
Thank you. Director Cochran, I had a question on the reserves aspect where it says best practice 1%, and underneath security slash opportunity. I know that these words can mean a number of things for me. When I see security and opportunity, I'm thinking investments and the opportunity to, to have another stream of income, but I don't want to make assumptions. So I just wanted clarification on security. Does it mean that, or are you referring to a sense of security and having an opportunity for that?
I am talking about having sort of a fail-safe underneath us if something happens. So if something bad happens, we have an opportunity to save ourselves. If something good happens, we have an opportunity to participate. So it's just to cover us. If revenues don't come in, if a project cost goes up, more to help us manage through the negative things.
Okay. And then my follow-up question would be, if we have that sitting in reserves, then just clarification for study on where is it going to be sitting, and is then, would we have options to have something that had given us liquidity as well as keeping up with inflation at the least?
And I think there are some ways that we can work that out, and I will bring that back in the different options, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any others? Director, what would be the, the tool for if a fund gets significantly out of balance and another fund is significantly under balance? Is there a reconciliation tool at the end of the?
So there are a few funds that can share revenues between them, but many funds, the revenues are restricted to the fund that they're in. I think, so there is, for example, there is two transportation capital funds. One's for major maintenance, things that we wouldn't capitalize, and the other is for things that we would capitalize. And we do have the ability to move some of the revenues between them. And I think anytime that we look at implementing something new, we're going to have to have the opportunity to be flexible until we get where we want to go, because it does disrupt, or potentially disrupt, other plans, other strategies. So I think we'll need to put something flexible in place that allows us to get where we want to go over probably a series of bienniums.
So I will just voice my
Way down!
enthusiasm for this. What was that? I will voice my enthusiasm for this. I think it's in the, sort of in the spirit of our CIP proviso a couple of years back, and keeping money tied to the intent. So I like this a lot, but I do recognize what you just said, that it's, it's new and you're optimizing the tools that you've been given, and we just need to be thoughtful and flexible as we move forward. So that's my thoughts. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Director Cochran. Could we also hear the recommendation on the capital program overhead? I'm unclear.
Capital program overhead, yes. I did include it, and let me go back a slide. I did include it in your slide. It's probably a level of detail that you don't need, so I removed it. But what it is essentially is we had going on for a while, an indirect as well as a direct transfer to our capital investment program. The indirect transfer was to take the portion of, let's say, a project manager's time that hadn't been directly charged to a program and move it as kind of overhead among all of the programs. When we did our indirect cost study last year, we had an opportunity to kind of dive into that practice. There was issues it caused us. It can hit small projects harder than planned. It can cause fluctuation and cause that is unpredictable and difficult for project managers to look into. So in our study with our consultant, what we found is that what we were doing actually wasn't best practice. These costs really should not go to our projects. So we, what we do at this point is we now move them still to the program, but they are expensed directly from those major maintenance funds. So it's a change in practice that we made. We made that internally effective in 2023 to prevent any audit issues.
Yeah, really quickly, just going back to the contingency and reserves, I agree with Councilmember Fields. I think this is a great idea. One thing that I wanted to focus specifically on is the opportunity slash emergencies, just splitting the two up and looking at, you know, what we're considering with potential new opportunities versus what we're holding for those emergencies. I think that would be really interesting to look at and just learn more about, you know, where we're forecasting that.
Happy to. So conversations coming up is the department overviews, which we will be seeing you on the night of June 25th. Those presentations are looking great. Departments are working really hard, as well as Haritha's staff, to get information available to you in there. We are also preparing, like I said, for the capital program overviews, and those are queued up for the night of July 9th. It'll be a lot of information, but they are putting it together in a really nice way, and we'll get that information out to you ahead of time so that you've got time to study and ask questions beforehand if you feel that that's necessary. We're also working on the business technology investments. It's been fun to see that program evolve since we started focusing on it a few budget cycles ago. So just to focus a little bit on the general fund first quarter numbers, on the revenue side, we continue to see really good growth and rebounding in revenues that were interrupted because of the pandemic, and I would say we are past the recovery point and, and moving on. We are seeing some of the downturns that we expected. So development review fees, we had pulled, decreased the budget for '23 and '24, and we are finding that even with the fee increases, the activity levels are starting to decline. We are also seeing on the sales tax side, that one-time sales tax revenue also is starting to trickle in just a little bit slower than it was. Just like on the capital side, it's very difficult to predict if this is a true downturn, if it's a temporary pause, if we're waiting for interest rates to come down. A lot of things can play into this. So we will continue to watch. It is an area of our budget that we are focused on right now. When you take these numbers and carry them into '25 and '26 and look at the growth in expenditures, we start to see the lines cross. And so we are talking about not only our forecast and the level of development that we really expect to see, but what we can start doing early to prepare if that does come to fruition. Very, very early, but we've had signs that development would slow down. We're starting to see those signs, and we will continue to monitor. Yes.
Just to be clear on these, this graph on the left, is the budget, the budget for the biennium?
Yes.
Or is this budget as in the budgeted amount to date versus the actual to date?
That is your biennial budget amount. So the three, or excuse me, 283 is our current budget.
Got it.
General fund revenues.
So if the, so we, so the fact that everything is behind is just because we're not at the end of the
That's correct. Yeah.
But it may be that we may not surpass it quite as much as we have, for example, on something like, like development fees?
I think development fees is a possibility. I think, I do think we will meet our targets for this biennium. I think going into the next biennium is where we start to need to focus a little bit.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah. On the expenditure side of things, all departments are doing well, and all really types of expenditures that we're looking at are performing as expected. are performing as expected. What we have received at this point is departments' estimates for the rest of 2024, so we can understand where they expect to be in actuals by the end of this year. And Haritha's group is working to help us understand, when we look at that trended out for the rest of the year, what does that look like? So working through that as well as the development of the baseline budgets that would be needed to support activities in the next biennium.
Yes.
Director Cochran, before we move on much further, I just wanted to get clarity for myself. Being new to some of the breakdowns, non-departmental is a very large percentage of the general fund expenditure. What does that cover?
It's a lot of transfers, transfers and what else is in there?
Mostly transfers and also the pension liability is coming out of that as well. But majority of it is operating transfers.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Forgot to turn it on.
All right. A couple of things, if you don't mind, that I want to put in front of you to consider. One is related to funding for our arts program and the other is for human services. So our arts program is currently funded by a couple of different sources and processes. So from the general fund, we help on an ongoing basis to offset the cost of staff that is responsible for hiring and managing our art plan, both the implementation of new art features, maintenance of arts, things like that. We also have a component for new art that is currently tied to the capital investment program. So the structure of that funding causes issues on the general fund side, where we have a program with some ongoing funding and looking at kind of the sustainability of that as well as what happens on the CIP side for the new art features. So on the CIP side, there is criteria in the current arts ordinance that says if a project is going to do these things, then it needs to pay 1% of its estimated cost towards art. So then our arts folks develop a plan based on our CIP plan, and it becomes very difficult for them to move their plan forward when the CIP projects don't move forward as expected. So one of their funding sources is completely dependent on the delivery of another. That can be complicated. So one of the things I've been considering is how do we make the arts program more predictable for staff? Provide them with opportunity to help grow the program by knowing what it is that the city will be committing? And breaking that tie to the capital program. It will allow us to essentially look at the arts program the same way I look at the capital investment program or the business technology investment program. We have a body of work that's intended to deliver an outcome over a long-range period of time. The current arts plan doesn't just go biennium by biennium. It stretches out over time. And one of the things that I would like to consider is utilizing our one-time funding sources to fund this program, just like we do business technology, just like we do the capital investment program. What this would look like in my mind for the upcoming biennium is we would take a look at their six years' worth of needs. If we have six years' worth of one-time funding available, then that's what the proposal would be. I don't, I don't know that at this point. But whatever funding we have available to help get funding in place for this program for a longer period of time, allow them more opportunities to plan, economies of scale. And then in future budget cycles, we're not dealing with an ongoing draw from the general fund. It is providing one-time funding for that outer year of the six-year program. So when we see the arts program again in '27 and '28, we're looking at their needs for the outer six years, '31 and '32. We certainly have time and ability within that timeframe to make adjustments to previous allocations that have been made to the program. But it just gives us predictability. Then predictability helps prevent, like I've said, this draw from the general fund that we can offset in a different way. Interested in your thoughts, information you would want in order to consider more heavily.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you for bringing the idea forward. I would, I would look forward to, you know, seeing a memo and some more information. I get nervous about funding programs with one-time revenue, just as we all do. Some of my curiosities in that, when I think about some of the neighborhoods that are, we are planning for to begin to receive their share of public art and how arts programming is occurring in our city and to fund that with one-time development. If that helps us get closer to the neighborhoods paying for the development, get the art? I'm curious if that's the case or not, or would be further the case or not. But other than that, I have a more reservation just on breaking this out and would need, need more information. And also would need a chance to, to study more the health of the CIP. We saw a couple of numbers tonight on the bar graphs, but would definitely need to be thinking about this more and kind of laying out the hypotheticals.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. So I hear from you the best of intention with the thoughts here and trying to make sure that these programs actually get funded. I also share similar concerns as Councilmember Stewart. I think we're all used to hearing the 1% going towards arts. And I, I think we're venturing into new territory here. So I have reservations that this would continue after those six years? Like, how, how are we going to continue those funds coming in? One-time money, is it always in such flux that we don't know? Is there a way we could creatively still keep that 1% from the capital projects? But then is that a transferable amount we could use in a different? Like, what are the creative solutions? I'm sure you've thought through all of this.
Yeah.
But yeah, just reservations and questions. And I love anything that gets us more public art. So I love that we're having this conversation just to have more questions.
Yep, that's great.
Councilmember Krista.
I would echo. I think I heard from you that the goal would be to provide more predictability. And I think having a current kind of dedicated funding source does provide that. So if we were to move to something that is based on one-time, I'd just like to understand how you would have that predictability over time. And potentially, I mean, if what you're, it sounds like what you're offering could potentially create more funding for art. And if that's true, then I'd love to hear about that. As well as to understand specifically what, what kind, you described it, but if you could include this in a future memo on what kind of ongoing funding we'd be freeing up? Because that is a type of funding that we're looking for right now. And we do also have a bunch of one-time funds. And so I could see the argument right now for us to use one-time funds for the arts if we have other kinds of things that can only be done through ongoing funds. So it'd be helpful to know what those, those funds could go towards as we look at that decision. Thanks.
Councilmember Noava Camina.
Thank you. I'm just going to hold this. I'm curious to know if there's a hybrid. That way, we could take advantage of the one-time funds as well as having that, that consistent. And perhaps that's, that's not a 1%. Maybe we drop that down to three-quarter, you know, 75 basis points instead. But looking at what, what creative options can we have while we're taking advantage of those funds and still creating that predictability?
Thank you.
So we're at it. Just doing a time check, we're at 35 minutes.
Well, it sounds like we're done.
Well, how many more minutes of slides do you have?
This is my last slide.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. And I think we still have the human services recommendation to hear about. I guess after listening to the conversation, to take it back up a few levels, I'm a bit concerned, or I guess I have some curiosities that the council is being asked to consider a couple of these recommendations here outside of the context of, of the big issue we have with our general fund. Our, our public safety levy failed while we were building our last budget, the budget we're currently in. And we need to get the quarterly reporting back on track for that so we can know really how it's performing. I appreciate the check-in on the two pie charts today. But we will need to study a bit more about our decisions that we made and how they're performing. We need to deal with the big, I just want to make sure we're going to get around to that big-picture question about the health of the general fund.
So let me explain my thought process, where I'm at right now, what I'm currently doing. So until we get baseline budgets determined, which sort of will help us understand what expenditure demand looks like. And we get the revenue forecast updated with really June numbers. So until June 30, I'm certainly looking at the numbers, studying them the best that we can. But my time has been on looking at things that we can do to help make our general fund financial structure sustainable. So that is where I've been spending my time. As the departments are moving through the development of their baseline budgets, I've been looking at things like how we're paying for staff and allocating them across funding sources. I am looking at our business technology program and how we can bring that in alignment with how we do the capital program and save ourselves some capacity in the general fund as well. So I certainly, I definitely hear your concern. All I can do right now is sort of tease up the things that I think will come to you later this year. And they may be small and they're not meaty. But I want to make sure that when they come to you, you're prepared for them. I've had the opportunity to hear your concerns and bring you information forward that you need to make a decision. I don't want you to hear about this in October and then not have the information that you need. This allows me to know where you feel comfortable, where you don't feel comfortable, evolve our thinking one way or another, and know what you need to feel comfortable. So yes, there is a bigger problem out there. It's difficult to explain until we're able to really see things all together. So I'm trying to prepare us for that by identifying what I can to create capacity. And then we'll figure out the rest. The last recommendation I had is related to human services funding. This is an area where I think we all recognize the incredible need that is in our community. And we received a recommendation from the Human Services Commission, which again, you know, has a recommendation for a per capita funding level that was higher than we had anticipated. What I would like to recommend to council is that we take the opioid money that was received and allocate that as part of our human services funding. It allows us to reach the per capita amount requested by the Human Services Commission in a much shorter timeframe. We will be able to do that over the next biennium instead of many out. It also allows us to ensure that the dollars are spent as they're intended, and we have the ability to report on them as required. They come with a lot of complications, and our human services folks are used to allocating funding to agencies that have, understand our reporting and are able to comply. So that is what my recommendation is for human services. It allows us to close the gap with funding we know that we will be receiving in the human services realm. So thoughts, feedback, input, questions?
Before I go to council, I think you described it as that, you know, there's restrictions and that this fault, you will find a way to make sure that it falls into the framework of those restrictions. I'll hold my comment, my other comment until after other council members. So Councilmember Krista.
Actually, my, my question was going to be just whether it would align with the restrictions on that funding, given kind of how broadly they allocate that in spending. And then also, if, if possible, I know last, when you came to our last meeting, you had a slide that had the details of the exact dollars and that they were recommending. It would be great to have that because I think it wasn't included in.
I will shed that with you offline. I don't want to get ahead of the Human Services Work or Commission, so I can send that to you via email, if that's okay?
Yeah, I think to be able to just know exactly what's, what's being considered, how much money, I mean, I can go back and watch the, the video, but it would be nice to have the slide if you could send that as well. But so, so it can fit, I guess to?
Yes, we've been working with Director Holland to ensure that those dollars can be a part of that program, allocated correctly, worked through reporting. There is one component, one settlement, that we would not want to allocate it. It's very one-time. The other's kind of coming in for 17 years. The one-time allocation, we've identified some needs needed on the public safety side that roll up with the requirements for that funding.
Councilmember Forsyth. Oh, sorry, were you?
I guess the only other question I would have is, is there any use we could potentially use of that funding since it's around kind of behavioral health for any of our public safety and alternative crisis response? Or some of that, just to understand what that might go towards if we, for other options. But I think, I think it's very compelling and would love to be able to close the gap.
Yeah, we're getting into where my questions were lying. So I think I just heard you say that the expectation is many of those settlements will continue coming to us for 17 years. So my question was based around the human service agencies tend to rely on that money long-term. So this will be funding that will be fairly stable.
Yeah, I would consider it ongoing at this time. I mean, it's 17 years. At some point, we'll need to recognize that we have, you know, funding that we need to replace, and we would start to phase that in.
Okay. And then the other question I had was around what part of that funding could be used for alternative crisis response? So it sounds like many of us are on the same page on that one.
Councilmember Stewart.
And then one more just to add to the list would be around how the commission would think about those dollars? Because we currently fund organizations through our human services budget who are doing work that would qualify for these dollars. So would the commission be most interested in further investing in those organizations or adding on new? And I'm always just making sure that the level of investment actually would make a difference, right? Like, if we are talking about a new staff member, like a half, a half a day a week versus another organization being able to staff someone fully for a whole week? So those are some of the questions I would be interested in hearing back from the commission about. Thanks.
Other comments, other questions? So my comment is, I'm actually very excited to hear this approach. I have had concerns for months now that, that we were going to use this fund, these funds for other things, education. And, and I think that the purpose is this money should go help the people who are damaged and hurt. And And I'm excited to hear that that's the people who have been hurt and the intent of the lawsuit was to remedy the damage done. So it sounds to me like that's where our focus is. And I'm very much appreciative of that. So let Director Helen know that I appreciate that.
I will.
Any other questions?
Sorry, Mr. Field.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. So I wanted to come back, Director Cochran. When will we have our next quarterly financials?
Next quarterly financial report. The first quarter report is posted out on the website right now. The next quarterly report is the second meeting in... Is it the first meeting in August?
Yeah.
First meeting in August. So June 30th will be our next quarter closing, second quarter close. And that report will be ready by early August.
Great.
Thank you. I do want to correct a couple of things because we shared some information over email today, too. And actually, that quarterly report, it has financials from 2023 still, and it doesn't list the prior quarters.
I'll check with Annika. I'm pretty sure it got posted today. So I don't know if there's some kind of update, but I'll make sure it's reflected appropriately. I can email that to you today.
I'd like to move on. If it's quick, sure.
Just a quick note on that, just on the reports. Appreciating getting the links to the monthly financial report. For the quarterly report, I think something that's really great in the monthly financial report is being able to see the budget versus actual and the percentages variance on the graphs that were presented as part of the quarterly report. As I kind of noted in my question, it's a little hard to be able to understand those differences. So that would be helpful if you could include that.
The report that you should be seeing is very detailed.
Okay, I think we didn't get that.
So I'll make sure that the right report gets up there. It's the normal report that you're used to seeing. So I'll make sure the proper one gets posted if it's not, and I'll send it in case.
Great, thanks.
If I got confused.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, finance.
Thank you.
Item two. I think we have the TIS Director. Development Services Platform Modernization Project. This is for a consent item. You have three minutes.
I'll take even less. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Here today, seeking approval to add a contract to the June 18 business meeting consent agenda in the amount of $73,239. This contract is with Tyler Technologies to deploy a test instance of the city's permit management platform, EnerGov, to the cloud. And it's part of a 2324 BTIP approved project.
Questions? Councilmember Anderson.
Is the threshold for this 50,000 and above is approval required?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Saul Houdin.
Really excited about the opportunity to streamline permitting. What would the timeline look like with regard to this proof of concept?
So I think this proof of concept, we're hoping to have complete and evaluated by the end of the year. And then based on the outcome of that, we would either continue forward on that plan or shift to something different, so.
Other questions? Are there any objections to this going on consent? I don't see any objections. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item three. Think we have Human Resources? Thank you. So updating council benefits and Mayor Salisbury, the 2024 process. I think this is just an introduction. And are you requesting a study session? Or asking if council needs a study session?
Yes, I'm requesting a study session on June 25. I'm also requesting additional information that you might be wanting me to obtain in preparation for our study session. So in the agenda memo, I had specified what information we currently have that we will be able to give to you. And what I'll do is I'll send you out an email tomorrow so that you... I'll summarize again the information that we currently have. And if there's any other additional information you would like us to gather, we will gather that for you.
Any insight that Councilmember Kritzer?
Our council spent a significant amount of time discussing this last year. And actually, we're ready to send this to consent when things happen with other salary-related things. And so we didn't move forward with that. But we did come to a decision, I think. And so it would be great to have the documentation of what that number was and what that methodology was since I'd hate for us to have to retread the same ground. We could remember what were some of the things. If you could summarize in the materials what we considered, what we prioritized, and the number that we came to at that time. I think it just helped expedite the process. And on the council benefits, just interested to be able to know a little bit more about comparables in other cities as we look at that.
On the council benefit topic, I'm interested to know, and on the mayor's salary topic, I'm interested to know from Jan Harrison's perspective, what equitable outcomes does she see missing from the list of things for us to review? So are there other programs? I know we have childcare allowance, car allowance, health benefits. Are there things that we might not be seeing that she could be seeing that would make an equitable impact into someone deciding whether or not this is a suitable thing for them to try to do?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I agree with the comments of the council president. And I would just add another spot here that felt incomplete in this memo. So if we could have it updated for the next, I think that'd be great. The previous council contacts. I have been speaking with a few directors about this. But if we can have the dates of the last council contact, including the discussions where we had the conversation last year, that can be exceptionally helpful to remind us of our own decision-making and also create inclusion for our new council members who might want to go back and read packets or see materials. Thanks.
Other questions, other comments? So when you come to us on June 25, will you have a recommendation and other options as part of what you're presenting?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I think we're good. Appreciate it, thank you. Item four, our all-time favorite topic. Welcome back. The quarterly overtime report.
Good afternoon again. I first wanted to introduce one of our new senior financial analysts. This is Daniel Morgan. He is one of three new phenomenal analysts that we have hired. It's always a challenge to bring people on and train, and it is not this time at all. So already providing quite a bit of input for us. So I'll hand it over to Haritha and Daniel to share the report with you.
All right, thank you so much. As we have less time, I just wanted to make sure that the report was shared with you all. Any questions on the overtime report? I can go item or department by department. But we have... Daniel and I can answer any... Address anything related to the data. And we have Chief and his team to address anything operationally.
So you want to council to decide whether... You just want to ask questions or you want to go through the whole presentation?
I can go through the whole presentation.
What does council want to do? Do you want to just ask questions? Has everybody read the report that they received? We are short of time. And so out of respect for everybody's time, I'm open to just hearing, starting with questions. Councilmember Kritzer.
I'd just make a comment, which is that I think it's the first time in a while that we've seen an overtime report where the fire actual is less than budget. So that's exciting.
Councilmember Forsyth.
I noticed the same thing. Whatever you're doing, good job. I just kind of want to reach out and ask you all, how are you feeling about where the actuals are? This does seem like it's trending better than we've seen in years past. So I just kind of want to get a feel for where you all are feeling.
I do think that it is trending better than we've seen in some recent years. I think if we look out further towards the end of 2024, we may need to spend some time ensuring that we are able to control expenditures. So as Haritha is starting to work with the rest of the fire department's estimates for 2024, we'll have a clearer picture of where they expect to be by the end of the year. And that will really help inform us if there's an overall issue. But so far, so good, doing a good job controlling their expenses within what's been budgeted.
Councilmember.
Thank you. Chief, just a quick question about the change where we had been over budget and now we're under and understanding that there's always a story behind the numbers and never to say that something is good or bad. So just wanting to know a little bit more about what shifted with these numbers.
Absolutely, and thank you for the question. I think that we're seeing better visibility with the deployment of telestaff, which gives us a better opportunity to forecast our staff as far as vacancies that are available. In addition, we've been very aggressive in our hiring processes. So there has been an expense, but also it's offset by making sure that we have people online available to work. So if we keep trending that way, hopefully, we can bring that down and we find that sweet spot number where there is an appreciable level of overtime, which is acceptable to both council and workforce.
Thank you. And I noticed that you did bring on a couple of personnel through city news. So please extend a welcome from city council.
Indeed, thank you.
So yeah, I appreciate everything that the council members have said and the fact that we're doing better. But I also recall that we had something we were calling a pandemic. And we had vaccine issues. And we were down in our number of firefighter staff. So that was... I mean, that has to be an issue as well, right? That you were able to move past all that and staff and sort of move on from those days. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Anything else? I think we are adjourned.